Take a roll call.
Lynn Heath.
Mike Warrington.
Bill Schnaber.
Tyson Bean.
Kirsten Bender.
Okay, approval of the minutes from August 17th, 2017 meeting. Does anybody have any additions or?
Correct.
Corrections?
None here.
Nope. Make your motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, may everybody agree?
Aye.
Motion, a second?
And passed.
And passed. Okay, next in line, committee and staff reports. Do you have anything?
I just wanted to point out to you on the residential development report, there's now a column that reflects the number of permits that have been issued year-to-date. That was something we had been talking about for a few months and finally figured out the only way to do that was just manually enter it, so it's on there for you now. And then we'll update that monthly.
Thank you.
Okay. I do like the percentages that are on there, it kind of sticks out. Showing it's up or down.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, about fifty percent. Fifty percent. Counting those other ones though, okay.
Any other questions from anyone on the residential development report?
Not here.
Okay, all right, so we need to recess the planning commission and convene the board of zoning appeals?
Make a motion to recess the planning commission and convene the board of zoning appeals.
I'll second.
All right. And, um... Okay, first on the list here. Okay, BZAV 2017-08. Public hearing on applicant filed by Dale Padding requesting a variance of 104 square feet from the required 1,000 square feet maximum aggregate total floor area for the purpose of constructing 960-square-foot detached garage on proposed zoning as R1, single-family, located at 1331 Aldrich Drive. Wes, do you want to tell us about this?
Yeah.
This request comes about from adding the proposed three-car garage to the existing garden shed pushes the pushes the aggregate total of accessory structures over the 1,000-square-foot maximum. Were it not for the existing 144-square-foot garden shed, this request wouldn't be in front of you tonight because the new garage is 960 square feet.
Just right on the edge.
So they're going to enclose that garden shed with the... I'm trying to picture what it's going to look like when it's done. Is the garden shed going to be enclosed in the?
The garden shed is a separate structure.
Yes. It's still going to stay a separate structure?
Yes.
Okay, it's just drawn here over top of it, that's...
You look at the drawing that's up on the monitor right now, it shows the proposed three-car garage and the existing garden shed that's up in the corner of the lot.
I was looking at the wrong picture.
Yeah, so you're looking at the hand-sketch one that's on here.
Gotcha.
So it's the garden shed that's pushing us over the limits.
Correct. If you look on the aerial photos, you can see that garden shed tucked back up in the corner of the lot.
Yep, yep.
Is there anyone that has any disqualifications or quorum or declared it?
None here.
It appears that we've had this notified in the Butler County Gazette. Melt Eleven owners. Any ex parte communications?
None.
Is there an applicant here that needs to want to talk about it? Okay.
Yeah, no.
Yes or no?
Yeah, he's here, but no, no.
Dale Padding from 1331 Aldrich, you've covered it pretty well. We've talked to the neighbors and the homeowners association, they're fine with it. I just felt like the previous owner, I just bought the house at the beginning of August. Previous owner built that garden shed less than a year ago, it's a nice building. You know, I hate to just tear it down. But I'd like to have a garage for my '66 Mustang and a few other toys. So I think it'll blend well, I'm planning to, I found some rock that matches the wainscoting on the house. So I'll put some of that on the front of the building, so it should blend in quite well. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
If I have any questions?
The door for the garage is going to be on the south side of the building.
The main door is on the east side of the lot. It faces the street, which is east.
Oh, okay.
Going to be an eight-foot door in the back, so I can go straight through it into the backyard for maintenance purposes, get to that garden shed back there.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Open this up to any public comment if anyone's here that wants to speak for or against it. Not will close public comment. Was there any additional written communication from any other owners?
No, we have nothing.
We'll close the public hearing. We need to go through our evidence and determining factors. Particular physical surrounding shape and topography conditions of the specific property involved would result in particular difficulty or understanding hardships upon or of the owner, let's say your occupant, distributed from a mere inconvenience. If the provisions of these regulations are literally enforced because the subject property is nearly twice the minimum lot size in the zoning district, and there is ample room for open space from the lot. They're...
Correct. Agree.
The request of the variance is not based exclusively upon a desire of the owner, lessee occupant, or applicant to make more money out of the property. The owner simply desires to have more garage space. That appears so. Agree. The granting of the variance will not be materially detrimental detrimental or injurious to the property or improvements of the neighborhood in which the subject property is located because the subject property is nearly twice the minimum lot size of the zoning district. And there's ample room. Correct.
I agree.
Yep. The proposed variance will not impair and adequately supply the light or air to adjacent property substantially increase congestion on public roads, increase the danger of fire, endanger the public safety, or substantially diminish or impair property values of the neighborhood. The property is still nearly twice the minimum size of the zoning district, and there's ample room.
Correct.
Okay, we have some specific conditions to be met. And the first one on this list, the variance requests arise from such conditions which is unique to the property in question and which is not ordinarily found in the same zoning district and is not created by or actions or action or actions of the property owner or the applicant. Subject property is nearly twice the minimum lot size of the zoning district, and there is ample room on the lot.
Yes, agree.
Okay. The granting of this variance will not adversely affect the rights of the adjacent property owners or residents because the subject property is near twice the minimum lot size, and there is still ample room.
Agree.
Yes.
The strict application of the provisions of this regulations from which the variance is requested will constitute unnecessary hardship upon the property owner represented in the application. The property is nearly twice the minimum lot size of the district, and there's ample open space for the lot. That the variance desired will not adversely affect the public health, safety, moral order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare because it's still twice the minimum lot size, and there's ample room.
Concur.
The granting the variance desires will not be opposed on the general spirit and intent of these regulations. The property is still twice the minimum lot size of the zoning district, and there's ample room for the lot, for the space of the lot.
Concur.
We met all those.
Are there any restrictions we need to place on this? I can't think of any.
No.
Okay.
Hey, well...
Yes, having entertained, oh, having entertained. Having considered the evidence at the hearing, determined that the findings of facts in the variant report have been found to exist that support all five conditions set out in Section 10107 of the zoning regulations and KSA 12-759 of the state statutes which are necessary for granting a variance. I, Lynn Heath, move that the chairperson be authorized to sign a resolution granting a variant for case BZV 2017-08 as requested. No restrictions, and the supporting, we need supporting findings on these two, Wes?
Okay, thank you. Need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, all right. Motion by Lynn and seconded by Tyson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Resolution will be prepared and made available to the applicant by September 30th, 2017. If anyone is agreed by this decision, a further appeal can be made to the district court to determine its reasonableness within 30 days after the resolution is signed and filed with the zoning administrator. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our list here is BZAV 2017-09. A public hearing on the application filed by Brian Gearing requesting a variance of 900 square feet from the required 600 square feet maximum aggregate total floor area for the purpose of constructing a 1,500-square-foot detached garage on the property zoned R2, single-family residential district located at 1609 North Church Street in Andover. Wes, you want to tell us about this one?
Again, this is a similar case where the lots in the area are considerably larger than the minimums for the zoning district, and there are also several large accessory buildings in the neighborhood of a similar size to the proposed.
Is the existing structure being demolished?
I believe that's their intent. The existing garage.
We'll find out when you get up there.
Yeah.
All right. Are there any disqualifications among us?
No.
Okay, this case has been notified, the Butler County Gazette. Property owners have been notified. Proper notification has been given. Any ex parte communication?
None.
Okay, is there an applicant here? All right, can you take? Name and address, please?
My name is Brian Gearing, and I live at 13228 East Tallowood Court in Wichita, and I'm here with my wife Nikki. Although we live just outside the city limits of Andover, we've been in this community for 10 years, our kids attend schools here, and both my wife and I are very involved in several committees in the school, and we feel that we're very much a part of this community. The property here, we bought as a rental property at 1609 Church Street, and our intent with this property is to build a garage on there and to remove the existing structure, which I believe to be an eyesore to the community, an eyesore to the neighborhood, and unfortunately, the condition of it, there's just no economical way that we can modify that to be able to either expand it or to put a garage on it. So it really needs to come down, and our intent here, our desire, I guess, is to put up a garage. I think that there's some consternation or concern in the neighborhood of us building the size of building that we want to build and what our intent is with that, at least that's been communicated to me. And I can sort of see how that happened, given how I went about the picture that I submitted there. Our intent here with this garage is really threefold. We want, we need garage space. We've got two kids that are on the cusp of driving, which means two new vehicles in our driveway at home, and I need to clear some garage space, so that's one. The second aspect of it is we want a workshop where my wife can paint. And then the third aspect of it is to be able to potentially offer some garage space with our rental property. When marking this building or the size out on this lot, I felt like that the lot could support it. You know, we're on a dead-end street, where I positioned that in the back. It's got trees, relatively thick trees on two sides, and I don't know that it would really be that visible unless somebody is driving down the dead end to our street or walking along the trail. So I felt like taking down that eyesore building and putting this up would actually be an improvement to that property, and it helps us to achieve what we're trying to achieve with it. Part of the concern that has been communicated to me with this is that folks are worried about traffic and us potentially trying to operate some kind of retail or commercial business in that, which I totally get. I would not want that in my neighborhood, and I have no intention of doing that here. This is strictly personal space for us, an added benefit potentially to our rental and the ability for my wife to go paint in the shop. You know, I think that some of the concern around the potential retail or traffic, I guess I want to give a little background on what my wife does or how we plan on using this property, aside from the storage or the rental space. My wife does colorful painting, which is an interior design technique. Eighty percent of what she does is in her customers' homes. It's painting walls, so it's not like you can take that and do that anywhere else. But on occasion, she has customers that want her to paint a piece of furniture that is matching to what she's done on the inside. This could be a coffee table, it could be an end table, a hutch, a cabinet, so to speak. And so we want to be able to work on that in a garage space. When she does that, it is very sporadic. It might be an instance where she works on it for three days in a row, and then she's never working on it or doing any painting for three weeks or three months. But having that workshop space would be very convenient for us, and it helps us value this property. There would not be any office or phone lines or traffic coming in and out, aside from my wife or I. I can see how that, I might have given that perception off by the look of that the building that I gave in as example, in hindsight, of course. But we strictly did that because I felt like having the awning on there would give it a little bit more neighborhood feel. So that was the intent there. And I'll talk a little bit at the end, we're flexible on doing a lot of different things here. But again, the use for this space would be personal space, space for the rental, and a workshop for my wife. We are open to changing the scope of the building, if that's of major concern. If we need to change the garage doors and have more garage doors or less. If you want me to remove the awning, we can do that, or even dress it up with some stone. The overall intent here for us is to get the use out of the property, the reason why we bought it. But we also respect the neighborhood and don't want to do anything that's going to create issues with our neighbors or be an eyesore. I mean, that's very important. It's become very apparent to me over the last couple of months that we've owned this property, that this is a very tight-knit neighborhood, which I think is awesome. And we want to be a part of that. We do not want to be a disruption or have bad relationships there. At the same time, I think we can do some things to improve this property. Aside from the garage, we'd like to re-site it, we'd like to put in new windows. This property has been neglected for years and years, there's been nothing done on it, and it is a great location and will be a great home for somebody, and we want to do those things. I think if you drive through this neighborhood, what you will see is you'll see several very well-maintained homes and people that have lived there for a long time. But you'll also see rental properties in there that have been neglected, and there's been no investment going in there. And this may be a bit of a stretch, but I think by allowing us to go in there, build this garage, fix this property up, I'm hoping that it inspires others to do the same. Any questions?
Very well.
So the prompt, you're saying that this will not be a business that will operate out of this garage?
That's correct. There would be nobody coming and going from that garage except for my wife and I on a sporadic basis in the last three years. I mean, right now, oftentimes she's painting some of this stuff in our living room. And I can think of maybe three times in the last three years where somebody has come by to pick something up or drop it off. But we do not go out and look to buy furniture and paint stuff and then resell it. We don't advertise it, simply word of mouth, word of mouth as part of some other projects. And I really do believe that would be minimal disruption to the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll open this up to public comment. If there's anyone from the neighborhood that's here that would like to speak on it? Come up to the podium and say your name and address.
Thomas Carr, 1540 North Church, live catty-corner to the property. Our biggest concern is the traffic. We've had some rentals that moved in. They're driving trailers and pickups up and down the street 15 times a day, putting wear and tear on an old street that isn't maintained very well. I think added traffic on that is going to be damaging to it. And I could, I'm not understanding why we would need two driveways for this property. It's like you're splitting it instead of having the garage basically where it's at so the tenants can use at least half of it. I mean, from my understanding, they weren't to use any of it, it was just for the owner. So I'm not agreeing with the traffic. And I agree, we need some property improvements in the area, but the house could use some property improvements before we put a garage in.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
I'm Lewis, I'm at 1603 Church, which is right next door. And I've spoken a lot with him in regards to the garage, which I'm okay with, size, shape, location. Our concern was a second driveway access, which is right along my property line, which we've discussed. My major concern would be commercial. And because it's rented out now to one, you add a second driveway strictly for them only, the new building, then that's going to be two zones plus commercial. And he's already discussed that they're doing housing or painting, which is always up for growth. More traffic, everything else on the old road. So that's pretty much where I'm looking at it. I'm good with the building and the road.
All right, okay. Anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you.
What's this other driveway? I missed that part.
Yeah, well, I think we'll get, probably can ask Les about that. Name and address?
My name is Max Carr, and I live at 1541 North Church. And my only concern about the building is if it's just going to be storage, the only thing it really needs is electric, it don't need water and sewer, right? If it's just storage, right, it doesn't need that. Well, my understanding is he's going to put water and sewer in it, too. And the sewer line behind the house is an old line, dead-end line. And it'll cost more to replace it for the city and stuff. So that's my only concern.
Okay. All right, thank you. Wes? Is, was there proposed additional driveways on this? For water and sewer and...
All of the above would be allowed. To have a restroom in a garage is pretty frequent, the man caves of today. The separate driveway, it could accommodate a second driveway with that width of a property. And/or the existing driveway could be widened. The discussion about the business aspects of this, I was looking at the home occupations that are allowed in the residential zones. Two of those that struck out to me were an artist, you know, this is a form of art. And the other is home crafts, such as cabinet making, model making, lapidary work, rugs. So what they're proposing to do is not outside the realm of a home occupation. However, there is one caveat that needs to ring clear to these folks is that no more than one person from outside of the onsite residence could work on this site. So if she wants to have a business in the garage, it's okay for her, is that one person from the outside.
Not the tenant, but not her and the tenant.
Or her and the tenant.
Right, yeah.
But she couldn't bring... But she couldn't bring in an employee from the outside.
Gotcha, okay.
Les, with his request or suggestion maybe down the road that they're going to utilize part of the parking there in the garage for the tenant, does that play into any restrictions there?
I don't see that as being any source of concern.
Okay.
Any other questions for Les? Mr. Gary, would you like to address anything else that the public had commented on?
Uh, maybe two things. I guess one...
Yeah, if you could go to the podium.
I guess the first thing I would just say is that I, again, I genuinely understand some of the concern because they don't know us, we've only owned the property for two months. And the traffic deal, the only thing I can say, and I told a few of them last night this, that I would not want, where I live in my current neighborhood, for somebody to come in and open up a business or increase traffic flow, traffic flow to do commerce. And I would not do that to somebody else. And again, all I have is my word, but I'm on public record here saying that I truly do respect that, and again, want to be a part of the neighborhood and not be some kind of, you know, obstacle. The second thing on the driveway, I really hadn't put too much thought about in it, or too much thought into it until last night when Lewis and I were discussing it. Without a doubt, it would be very convenient for us and the current tenant to have a separate driveway that I would install. But it does not need to be that way. If we can widen that, I don't, I'd rather not go that route because I'm afraid I'd have to take a tree out, which I'd like to leave the tree. But there's a way we could make that work, and then towards the back of the house, just veer it off a little bit. And I said two things, actually, there's three. My wife works alone, she has no employees, she won't even trust me with a paintbrush. Again, this is furniture stuff that she does on her own, has been doing it now for fifteen years, seventeen years, and has remained working by herself. So again, I do respect the concerns that this thing could blow into something different, but we've got seventeen years where she's done this herself, and again, to us, we want to be good neighbors and just want this to be a workshop. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Yes, sir.
Both driveways, if you went to that, would be on the south side of the house. As I'm looking at this, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So there wouldn't be one going around to the north?
No. And what I would do, if it gets approved and we can do a second driveway, then, you know, I would work with Lewis to try and figure out, hey, what works for both of us here in this scenario? That would be the tactic we'd take.
Okay, all right. So as long as you understand what the planning director had said about operating a business and having employees, you can't do that, but as long as your wife does it and there's no employees, then the regulation does allow it.
Yeah, I acknowledge that, yes.
Yeah, I'd be sure and check with the, I'm not sure who does it. Plan committee, how wide a driveway there can be and all that kind of good stuff, because I got experience in that area.
Okay.
So that's all.
Thank you. Obviously, the neighborhood, you know, is concerned about items that were brought up, but also okay with storage and, but I think it was mostly traffic was the main thing. I don't know how much more traffic would be added if just one extra car would be going up and down the road.
Two driveways and the traffic, I think that was about the size of the main ones.
Yep. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. We have some evidences of demonstration and specific conditions to be met and talked about here. William, would you mind going through those?
Sure. Does the evidence demonstrate that? One, the particular physical surroundings, shape, or topographical condition of the specific property involved would result in a practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship upon or for the owner, lesssee, or occupant, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience, if the provisions of these regulations were literally enforced? Because the subject property is located on a large lot at the end of a dead-end street adjacent to Red Bud Trail.
Yes. Concur. Number two, the request for a variance is not based exclusively upon a desire of the
owner, lesssee, occupant, or applicant to make more money out of the property, because the applicant desires more personal enclosed storage space.
Correct. I think, I think storage space is the main thing.
That's the kicker for, yeah.
And...
It's the, it's the get rid of a building about ready to fall down, then put it up a nicer building, and then be able to have a place to do some work.
Okay. Concur.
Concur.
Yeah, worded that a little bit.
Three, the granting of the variance will not be materially detrimental or injurious to the other property or improvements in the neighborhood in which the subject property is located. Again, because the subject property is located on a large lot at the end of a dead-end street adjacent to the Red Bud Trail.
Correct. Yep.
Concur.
Keep things secure.
Four, the proposed variance will not impair an adequate supply of light or air to adjacent property, substantially increase congestion on public streets or roads, increase the danger of fire, endanger the public safety, or substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. Because the subject property is located on a large lot at the end of a dead-end street adjacent to the Red Bud Trail.
Concur.
Concur.
Yes.
All right. We need specified conditions to be met. One, that the variance requested arises from such condition which is unique to the property in question and which is not ordinarily found in the same zoning district, and is not created by an action or actions of the property owner or the applicant. Because the subject property is located on a large lot at the end of a dead-end street adjacent to the Red Bud Trail.
Correct.
Yes.
Concur.
Two, the granting of the variance will not adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners or residents, because the subject property is located on a large lot at the end of a dead-end street adjacent to the Red Bud Trail. Concur. That strict application of the provisions of these regulations from which a variance is requested will constitute unnecessary hardship upon the property owner represented in the application. Again, because the subject property is an older area where there are several similarly sized detached accessory buildings.
Yes, concur.
Four, that the variance desired will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare. Because the subject property is located on a large lot at the end of a dead-end street adjacent to the Red Bud Trail. Concur.
Correct. Yes, concur.
Five, that granting the variance desired will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of these regulations, because the subject property is located on a large lot at the end of a dead-end street adjacent to the Red Bud Trail.
Yes.
Concur.
I don't think we have any conditions that we need to set on this.
I think it's pretty well spelled out in the regs.
Okay, all right. Do you hear a motion? Sure. Having considered the evidence at the hearing and determined that the findings of fact in the variance report have been found to exist that support all the five conditions set out in Section 10-107D1 of the zoning regulations and KSA 12-759E of the state statutes which are necessary for granting of a variance. I, Tyson Bean, move that the chairperson be authorized to sign a resolution granting the variance for case number BZA-V 2017-09 as requested.
I'll second it.
Okay, having heard a motion by Tyson and a second by Lynn, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. A resolution will be prepared and made available to the applicant by September 30th, 2017. If anyone is agreed by this decision, a further appeal can be made to the district court to determine reasonability within thirty days after the resolution is signed and filed with the zoning administrator. Thank you very much. I'm sure they'll be right in.
Oh, well, some will sit there and moan and complain and bellyache and everything else for a couple of years, then do something.
Well, it looks like we only have one person left in the audience.
Is this Chris Myers?
No, I'm with the soccer.
Okay. All right, last on the list here for the zoning. BZA-V 2017-10, a public hearing on the application filed by Chris Myers requesting a variance to permit, to permit a two-foot increase to a required ten-foot max height limitation to allow the construction of a twelve-foot high monument sign on property zone for B6 Business District located at 936 North Andover.
Yes. Familiar with it.
Les, you want to tell us about this one?
I think the picture probably explains the best. They've got a ten-by-ten monument sign there that, about the top two feet of it is their business name, and the center is a changeable message board. The address is in the bottom third or so, which really doesn't leave any room in a visible spot for their phone number, which I've heard is a problem. So they've been scrolling their phone number in their message board that's, you know, better served to be telling you what their special of the day is.
Yeah.
This is kind of an interesting location. It's really in an industrial park, it's on an arterial street with something like twenty thousand cars a day, and staff just can't believe that there would be any harm to the public by raising that sign up another two feet for visibility. There is, what doesn't show here in the photographs is there is landscaping that was required by the Site Plan Review Committee. As you know, they're required to screen their parking lot to a height of three feet, which makes the bottom three feet of the sign on here.
Not much useful.
All right, any disqualifications?
No.
Nope.
All right, this has been notified in the public, in the Butler County Times-Gazette. Eleven owners have been notified. And proper notification has been given. Any ex parte communication?
Nope.
None.
Is there an applicant here to talk on it? No?
No, we don't have much to say.
Yeah.
I'm just kind of here to...
Okay. All right. Okay.
Thank you.
I can't think of much.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
No.
Straight for you.
All right. We'll open public comment.
Hey, Nini. We'll close with a big comment.
Yeah, all right. With no additional questions, we'll close the public hearing. And we have to go through the evidence and specific conditions again. Tyson, do you want to help go through that?
Surely.
Okay.
Do you bet we just can't read the answers? We already know what the questions are.
Say we approve one through four?
Yeah. We do. Does the evidence demonstrate that the particular physical surroundings, shape, or topographical condition of the specific property involved would result in a practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship upon or for the owner, lesssee, or occupant, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience, if the provisions of these regulations were literally enforced? Because the subject property is surrounded by heavy commercial-industrial uses and located on an arterial street in an industrial park?
Concur.
Concur, yes. Two, the request for a variance is not based exclusively upon a desire of the owner, lesssee, occupant, or applicant to make more money out of the property, because the business derives much of its business from drive-by traffic. The more visible sign makes locating the business easier for motorists passing by.
Concur.
Concur.
Agreed. The granting of the variance will not be materially detrimental or injurious to other property or improvements in the neighborhood in which the subject property is located, because the subject property is surrounded by heavy commercial-industrial uses and located on an arterial street in an industrial park.
Okay.
The proposed variance will not impair an adequate supply of light or air to adjacent property, substantially increase congestion on public streets or roads, increase the danger of fire, endanger the public safety, or substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood, because the subject property is surrounded by heavy commercial-industrial uses and located on an arterial street in an industrial park.
Yes, concur.
Okay, we need to make sure that specified conditions are met. One, that the variance requested arises from such condition which is unique to the property in question and which is not ordinarily found in the same zoning district and is not created by an action or actions of the property owner or the applicant, because the subject property is surrounded by heavy commercial-industrial uses and located on an arterial street in an industrial park.
Yes, concur.
That granting of the variance will not adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners or residents, because the subject property is surrounded by heavy commercial-industrial uses and located on an arterial street in an industrial park.
Concur.
Yes, concur.
The strict application of the provisions of these regulations from which a variance is requested will constitute unnecessary hardship upon the property owner represented in the application, because the subject property is surrounded by heavy commercial-industrial uses and located on an arterial street in an industrial park. That the variance desired will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare, because the subject property is surrounded by heavy commercial-industrial uses and located on an arterial street in an industrial park.
Yes, concur.
And that granting of variance desired will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of these regulations, because the subject property is surrounded by heavy commercial-industrial uses and located on an arterial street in an industrial park.
Concur.
Concur. Heard of me saying that?
All right, no additional conditions, I don't foresee for this one either.
Nope.
Entertaining a motion?
Chairman, I, having considered the evidence at the hearing and determined that the findings of fact in the variance report have been found to exist that support all the five conditions set out in Section 10-107D1 of the zoning regulations and KSA 12-759E of the state statutes which are necessary for granting of a variance. I, William Schnaber, move that the chairperson be authorized to sign a resolution granting the variance for case number BZA-V 2017-10 as requested.
I'll second it.
We're passing the charter out tonight.
All right, having heard a motion from William and a second from Tyson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any ayes? Okay, motion passes.
One of the things I bring out on this is, I think Les and I only tweeted through around when we restricted the size of these signs to this, and we did it so we could have a little bit more control over at the time, because it was getting so, a company could come in. And anyway, we very, we've only turned down two requests for larger signs that I can think of. And one of them was on, would have been, to us, me, would have been too big a sign to put... to put on top of this building. And so, we, we made them stay at the smaller size. And then, I don't remember what the other one was, but I remember the subject came up. But basic thing, this is not an unusual thing to have happen and it, and that's what it's for though, is to bring in here, make sure they got a good reason to make it slightly bigger. Reasonably slightly bigger. Is that all correct?
Just before you walked in, Lynn, Mike and Bill and I were having a conversation about signs and, and the different dynamic that site planning has brought into monument signs and requiring that three feet of screening. If you're going to limit a sign to 10 feet in height and then turn around and screen it three feet, you've only got a usable area of about seven feet. And of course, they don't want to get too wide. 10 or 12 feet seems to be the magic width. So, we may come to you with the, the new unified development manual, sign regulations, and propose that the maximum height for those monument signs might be 12 or 15 feet. As I've routinely seen you grant-
Yeah.
Variances over the years up to as high as 17 feet for monument type signs, so it'll be something we'll bring to you in the future.
I'd be more concerned with the width, you know, visually, I think, you know, driving or walking, riding, you know, any, the width is what affects the, really the sight.
Right, everything has to be landscape.
Restricted visibility. We still don't want to be, have it within a reasonable-
Right.
Just like this, with reasonable size, so that if they want something extra big, they have to come and ask us.
Mike, this is a little off the subject, but as far as visually, some of the shrubbery and landscaping plans within the area between the sidewalk and the street, I see, I see several areas that are a big, huge concern for me pulling in and out of driveways and that, I don't know if we're in, you know, we're, who, who's in charge of that, but ACE Hardware is a big, is, is an area that I dread.
That's one of the things we're going to strengthen in that UDM, is that that vision triangle also applies to driveways, not just streets.
No, because a lot of those, you have to pull past the stop sign to be able to see-
See. Down the road. Into the, in traffic.
Well, that and trees, I mean, you know, slow-going trees or that are low bushed, you know, they're only a couple of feet off the ground. You're not, there are several cases of that around town too, so.
You got any questions?
Okay, do I need to read this last closing remarks? Okay, alright. A resolution will be prepared and made available to the applicant by September 30th, 2017. If anyone is agreed by this decision, a further appeal can be made to the district court to determine its reasonableness within 30 days of the resolution is signed and filed within the zoning administrator. Thank you, sir.
Thanks for staying late.
Alright, we need to adjourn the Board of Zoning Appeals and reconvene the planning.
So moved. I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay. Member items?
No comment.
Not here?
Nothing here.
Thank you all for coming.
Okay, alright.
Good meeting.
Yes.
Well done.
Then we adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah. I'll second it.
Motion second. We're done.
Quit drinking that water, you can second it quicker.
We're done.
Two firsts and one, no second.